Good evening. I would like to call to order the March 21st, 2022 council meeting to order. Jenny, would you please call, roll?
Ms. Aludo.
Here.
Ms. Amrose Grooms.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Here.
Mayor Fox.
Here.
Mr. Keeler.
Here.
Ms. Cram.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
John, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the judicial with liberty and justice for all.
We have a very special presentation this evening for our Grand Leprechaun recognition, and I would like to ask the Hadakas to come to the podium, please.
Our Dublin St. Patrick's Day celebration includes many traditions, such as the selection of the Grand Leprechaun. This is a tradition that dates back to 1984. This honor recognizes an individual or a couple who has made significant contributions to the Dublin community. We are so proud to have Hadaka USA located in Dublin. Since establishing the company here in 1989 and throughout several expansions, the Hadakas have consistently given back to our community. Mr. Hadaka serves on the Board of the Japan American Society of Central Ohio, or JASCO, the Dublin Chamber Board of Directors, and the Dublin Methodist Hospital Foundation Board. Mrs. Hadaka has served on the Dublin Arts Council Board and is a member of SIU, which is an organization of volunteers who demonstrate traditional Japanese tea ceremonies to local schools and universities in central Ohio. The Hadakas also were instrumental in fundraising for the new Dublin branch of our Columbus Metropolitan Library in 2019. We so appreciate how they share their Japanese culture with us, especially through the celebration of sakura or cherry blossoms. If you've ever driven along Shire Rings Road in the spring, you'll notice 120 beautiful cherry blossom trees on the Hadaka USA property. Each year, Hadaka USA and Mr. and Mrs. Hadaka host a hanami, which is a cherry blossom viewing party, in a Japanese tradition which represents birth and renewal in the spring and is an event we all look forward to so much every year. Although we were unable to celebrate Mr. and Mrs. Hadaka in the traditional St. Patrick's Day parade due to the weather, the Hadakas were our honored guests at the Grand Leprechaun luncheon and at last Thursday's St. Patrick's Day family celebration in the park, which you were quite active giving out lots and lots of candy, and the kids loved it. On behalf of Dublin City Council, all of us here in the city of Dublin, we thank you for your years of service, dedication to our community, and your kind spirit of generosity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So this is an opportunity at this time for citizens' comments, for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone present who would like to make a comment, or have we received any comments online, Lindsay? All right. Next is our consent agenda. Is there a request to remove any item from our consent agenda this evening? I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, would you please call, roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Second reading public hearing ordinance is ordinance 02-22.
Rezoning the Shops at River Ridge, including two parcels from BSD C, Bridge Street District, Commercial District, to BSD SRN, Bridge Street District, Scioto River Neighborhood District, and zoning one parcel formerly Right of Way, BSD SRN, Bridge Street District, Scioto River Neighborhood District totaling 14.02 acres located southeast of the Riverside Drive and State Route 161 roundabout.
Our staff report this evening is with Jenny Roush, Director of Planning. Hi, Jenny.
Hi, good evening, mayor members of council. As stated, this is the second reading for ordinance 02-22, which is a rezoning for three parcels located at the intersection of Riverside Drive and West Dublin-Granville Road totaling approximately 14 acres. This was introduced to council at the last meeting, and there were a number of follow-up items, which we have outlined in your packet, and I'll give a brief overview as well. So as part of our discussion with the introduction, there was questions about the proposed rezoning in terms of the standards and what the changes may be when moving into the Scioto River Neighborhood District. So I wanted to highlight a couple items, as I mentioned, that were in your memo, but that I thought were worth highlighting again here and talking through with council as this proposal moves forward. So the first is the existing zoning, as I mentioned in the intro, was, is the Bridge Street District Commercial District, and the proposal is to move to the Scioto River Neighborhood. And the intent of that commercial district, as outlined in the code, was again meant to retain the opportunity for those existing commercial, in a lot of instances, commercial that is auto-oriented development style, but those over time would then be rezoned to a more mixed-use neighborhood district, which is what is being proposed. And within that neighborhood district designation, that Scioto River Neighborhood, there are elevated design standards that have to be met, so moving to this district is beneficial to us as well as to the applicant, but ensuring that open space, additional open space requirements are met through those neighborhood standards, as well as streetscapes and gateways and place making, that those are very important to establishing a character of a neighborhood that we want to see within this area and moving away from the more auto-oriented shopping center that's currently there and the uses as well. So we're able to provide that sort of vibrancy on both sides of West Dublin-Granville Road. There was some discussion as well, and I have a couple slides to that related to the building types and what building types are currently permitted under the commercial district and what would be then allowed under the proposed zoning district. And then the review process. With the review process, whether it's under the commercial district or under the proposed Scioto River Neighborhood District, there is a three-step process that has to be gone through for any development proposal. So no application has been submitted to planning. The applicant is exploring development concepts for a portion of that site, and the applicant is here tonight to speak to any questions related to that and what their purpose for making this request is. But regardless of that, there are three steps. So if there's a concept plan, or when a concept plan is submitted, if there's a development agreement associated with that, that would ultimately come to council because council has the authority under the Bridge Street Code in that concept plans have to be in review and approved by council. So Planning Commission would see it, make a recommendation to council for the concept plan. Then there would be a preliminary development plan step, and should council make Planning and Zoning Commission the required reviewing body, that would stay with the Planning Commission. And then there's a final development plan step that also would be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So there's three opportunities. There would be notification of all residents adjacent to that, similar to what the rezoning is, and have the opportunity to walk through and understand the proposal and how any proposal, when one comes forward, would be reviewed and potentially impact them. So there would be lots of opportunity for input along the way. And we would recommend that prior to any application being filed, that that be shared with the residents, so that input could be gained ahead of time. That's a standard practice for us as well. So in terms of the building, permitted building types, Bridge Street Code outlines certain building types, and each of these have, within the code, a two-page layout that has all the various requirements and then how that translates to a design. So on the far left-hand side are all the building types. The middle column is what building types are currently permitted within the commercial districts, all the ones that have the checkmarks. And then under the proposed zoning for the Scioto River Neighborhood, that would be expanded with then the exception of that commercial center building type being removed, and that is a much more auto-oriented style of design, so that building is removed then within the neighborhood. And then we also did, I won't go through every line of this, but just wanted to give you a sense of sort of the big, the big-ticket items that we look at in Bridge Street and have talked about before in terms of building type requirements. So again, all the building types on the left-hand side. The build zone, so that is where the building has to be located on this, in terms of the frontage. So in Bridge Street, I know there's a lot of resident concern about building location, how that potentially would impact them when something moves forward. Bridge Street wants the buildings to be located towards the street, so that, those numbers, either five to 20, zero to 15, is where your building has to be located in proximity to your front setback. So the buildings want to be really close to the street. Impervious coverage, pervious coverage, that's the second column. So that, again, across the board ranges from 65 to 85% of impervious coverage, so how much is covered by building or pavement. And again, that's pretty consistent with the, within the building types. Building height, we talked about that last time as well. So within the building types that are permitted, this would then look at corridor building, that would be the only building type that adds an extra story should there be a development proposal coming forward. So that's sort of, that's the fourth one down. That one would permit up to six stories. But currently, the code would allow buildings up to five stories with the building types that are permitted within the commercial district. Then we look at transparency, so more urban buildings are, we want more transparency, so that's how much glass, how much activity, how much you're seeing at that street level, so you're not looking at blank walls, you're looking at active spaces along the streetscape. So again, the number of buildings that have a high transparency is very apparent within these various building types. And then I thought it was important to highlight parking location, again, providing some reassurance that the building is located to the front and parking is located to the rear. So buildings would be pushed towards the street, leaving space and buffering to residential or existing properties that are, that are currently there. So with that, I can, I'm going to answer, happy to answer any questions. Planning Commission reviewed this in January and made a recommendation of approval, and staff is recommending approval to council tonight. And as I mentioned, Russ Hunter is here from Crawford-Hoying and happy to answer any questions and provide you some overview of what the proposal includes.
Thank you, Jenny. Lindsay, we have public comment on this this evening?
We do, mayor. I have a comment from Robin Gallietti, 6449 Martin Place. Says, "Hi, I live on the cul-de-sac directly behind where this proposed building is to go, Martin Place off of Martin Road. As I am for the development of this property, I am totally opposed to a five- or six-story building being planned for this area. As I am hopeful that the design of the building will be beautiful, I am concerned about there being the possibility of residents being able to view this tall of a structure from our street. This may in turn cause our property values to go down. Thank you for your consideration." And we do have a couple of people here who have signed in for this topic. Thomas Cromer.
If you'll just come to the podium and state your name and address for us, we'd appreciate that.
I live at 6450 Martin Place. It's the cul-de-sac where Robin lives. My wife and I have been living there for almost 29 years now. We couldn't make the March 7th meeting, my wife's birthday, but some of our neighbors came, Scott Herring in particular, and Amy keeps us up to speed on things that are going on in our neighborhood, too. And I did get the 300-foot letter. I'm an attorney. I did taxes, Certified Financial Planner with Deloitte, and so I know how to read stuff, but that took a little bit of effort to try to figure out what was going on when it comes in that, that format. 12 to 15 years ago, I think it was, I attended some of the open houses that were held at Wendy's about building out the Bridge Street corridor. And I made a point at that event in public comments to mention, hey, this is really neat, but everything seemed to be north of 161. And I wanted to remind them, as they were conceptualizing, that, that there are people who live south of 161, and although we call ourselves Lower Dublin, it's not Upper Arlington, but it is Dublin, we do live there, it's a unique community. Those homes were built prior to 270 going in in Yerfield. I drink well water. Most of the homes sit on an acre, nicely wooded, it's an oasis. I'd like it to stay that way. So when this proposal came up and we're talking about the character of the neighborhood, remember, we are there. We are single-family, one-acre residential. We like that. As things have gone up north of 161, I thought, wow, these are big. We sometimes refer to it as New Dubai. I hope it's successful. I hope it does well. I hope it doesn't turn into a continent, if you remember that, over by 71. We are not in favor of anything approaching six stories, five stories, or even four, I'm not sure what four and a half stories is. The Sunshine of Dublin and that building that went up behind our neighborhood, I know it had some hiccups, I think that's only about a three-story building. We're aware of the Friendship Village south of this on Riverside Drive, it's five stories. I can't think of anything other than what has gone up being more than five, six, or seven stories. I do notice how the taller buildings are on the street, and as you move back heading east, they start to step down to five-story, four-story, three-story when you get into the apartments. I guess I would have no objection, and I will be here if a plan does come forward. I would ask you to table this for now. I can understand they want to get investors and get everything lined up where they can build the thing that generates the most cash flow, get it leased up, sell it off to a REIT, a pension fund or something like that, and the more stories you add, the more revenue you can generate off it. But I would, I would ask that you table this until there's actually a plan or proposal to put forward. I would prefer to see nothing more than five stories on that corner where the old Wendy's was, and then as you step up in elevation past Montgomery Inn where the Shops at Riverside are, nothing more than four stories. I'd prefer to see three. Transition over to our neighborhood, our residential neighborhood is the closest residential neighborhood without crossing the river. That is impacted by what is going on on Bridge Street. So as I said 12, 15 years ago when this came up, don't forget us, we are there, we have a nice neighborhood, we'd like to keep it that way. I would add one more little point on this, is I know it will be economically viable and it should be a good walking community. One of the things we tried to get done and it didn't happen is there is no connector to the Riverside community where, which is part of Dublin Schools, Scioto Commons or Friendship Village. You cannot get from those neighborhoods to do any shopping, to go to the library, to go to the barber, restaurants, without getting in your car. When this proposal comes forward and they want to do it, get the connector done, that sidewalk that ends at Friendship Village and then terminates in front of the Stadler Law Firm, get that done, open that up, those are our neighbors, we'd like to have him join this, this community. And please, limit the size of these buildings to five stories on Riverside Drive and no more than four up there on the, on the bluff where the shops are. We like our neighbors, but we don't want them necessarily looking down on our houses all the time. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have Gail Griffith.
Gail, if you'll state your name and your address, please, thank you.
Gail Griffith, 6465 Martin Place. A lot of what I would have to say, Mr. Cromer said eloquently, I'll be very brief. I've lived in Dublin for 45 years and in my current home on Martin Place for 37, just south of the subject property. And I look out my window, this evening, before I came, I was looking out my window much of the day, I'm there, I'm doing that when I'm preparing meals, and my family, adjoining family room has all window on the north side, looking at a beautiful backyard. Mr. Reiner did some planning and execution of landscape for me in my backyard, I don't know if you remember that. My husband said, late veterinarian, Dr. Don Griffith, maybe that helps you. Anyway, it, it kind of breaks my heart to think about maybe seeing a few floors of a tall building out that beautiful view. And I, while I adore living in Dublin and what a nice place to be and what wonderful services we have, I hope that the, maintaining the property values and the happiness of the neighbors who are currently in Dublin will be very important in any consideration you give. It sounds like some of the plan is a positive thing for everybody, but the height of a possible tall building is, is the upsetting part for me. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
We have Scott Herring.
Hello. Yes, I received a letter, and to Tom's point, it was true, it had this paragraph that's on the agenda here, just changed from this to that. So it has been, it was very educational here at the meeting two weeks ago to learn all the nuances of what these possibilities are. Like the Cromers, I've been in Dublin for 25 years, all of it on the Lilly Mar Court. I've been involved in the traffic calming process, which led to the speed humps on, on that. Michelle Crandall was a young clerk, I'll say, at that time, and it helped me through that process. And then it got, our, our neighborhood was referred to as the Martin Road Corridor, and that's fitting. And it is a, a neat little oasis. And to Tom's point, it's all been zoned R2, single-family homes. Many years ago, I was involved as well in speaking with the neighbors when that Sunshine Retirement Center was built, and that is a three-story building. If you enter our neighborhood to Lilly Mar, on the very short Braxhamar Place, you can see to the north what a three-story building looks like in our neighborhood. So I fully respect, I just want to reiterate my point from last time. If this is zoned as this Bridge Street Commercial District, and if that allows five stories, well, then that's been the zoning for a long time, and I guess an application for that would have to stand. As soon as I read the possibility of six stories with this new designation, that's what particularly concerned me. And I think I remember this correctly, but maybe not, so I hope I present this correctly. As I recall, in the Bridge Street District, there was a great desire expressed by the city to see that corner where the Tim Hortons had been, to be anchored by a hotel. And I'm pretty sure that this zoning indicated that six stories would be the maximum. And then there is the, all the bartering and negotiations that goes with such a gigantic project like this. And I'm pretty sure the phrase, oh, it's just not economically viable unless if we go to seven stories. And I believe the hotel's seven stories. So I'm just trying to guard our position here a little bit, that what starts as five doesn't become six, or what's allowed as six doesn't become seven. Certainly as a buffer, as this is the southern terminus of the Bridge Street District, I hope that this would be limited in its scope and height. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Russell Hunter?
Russell Hunter, 6640 Riverside Drive. Really here to, to answer questions, more than anything, obviously, I'm with Crawford-Hoying, I believe I know all of you. I think if there's anything that I can do, perhaps to help understand, sort of clarify why we're here, you know, so we have a lot of ideas for, for what this could be. And honestly, what we're really focused on is not the Shops at River Ridge at all, but rather the, the land that's up against Riverside Drive. So the old Wendy's and sort of defunct Storm Pond. And unfortunately, it is quite possibly one of the most complicated sites in the city for a number of reasons. One, it's actually two parcels, so the, two parcels with two different ownership and investor groups. The pond, which you would think would want to go with the old Wendy's, is actually a part of the River Ridge. And another, another obviously complicating factor is access. How do you get to that site, you know, knowing how the, the roundabout is engineered? All of those things really go together just to say that we're looking for some amount of just conversation and transparency before we go down this path, knowing that it's going to be really expensive to figure some of those things out before we're really able to bring a project to you. It's really no, it's no different than what we did when we originally wrote the Scioto River Neighborhood Standards. So we wrote those before we had Bridge Park fully baked, and then we were able to come with a project. So it's, that's really where we're at at this point. We don't have a project yet. I, I fully agree. I, I fully agree with what, you know, we talked about the connection, connection of the multi-use path. That's something we would really like as well. And we would also, and I say this in all sincerity, would want to work with these. As we do come up with a project, we would want to meet with you before we met with anybody else. We just don't simply have that yet. Like I said, we've got ideas, they're mostly in my head. We haven't hired anybody yet. So, that's why we're here. It's, it's, it's complete transparency. Any other questions, very, very happy to answer them.
Thank you.
We have Dana Cromer.
Hi, I'm Dana Cromer. I live at 6450 Martin Place. That's my husband. I don't know if I'm saying anything unique at this point, but they asked me to read my own online submitted comments. So, we've lived at Martin Place since 1993, and obviously, there's been a huge amount of change in Dublin since those years. And I think most of them overall have been quite positive. But I again, share everyone's concern about the height of these buildings and particularly the consideration of six or higher story structures. I'm not sure that a six-story structure on the old Wendy's site would impact us at all, honestly. I think that's, it's such a lower elevation that, that possibly would not really hurt us or impact us. But I think any within the shops at River Ridge would be a very negative impact on our neighborhood and the quality of our, or the actual, you know, value of our homes, as well as the, you know, impact of our lives there. And I feel a looming structure there would be something that none of us living in that neighborhood would want to see. I think lower residential housing would be, you know, great in that shops at River Ridge to offer a transition into our neighborhood. And I think that's what we're all asking. I look to the council to balance the needs and requests of the businesses with the needs of the residents who live there and support this community. And I feel very strongly that the developer needs to provide a full plan before going forward. So, thank you.
Lindsay, did you have any other comments?
Those are all I have registered at this time.
All right. Thank you. Council, questions or discussions? Andy?
So unlike my, most of my fellow council members, I never had the benefit of serving on planning and zoning. So I'm going to ask a question that everybody else probably knows. But two weeks ago, when we had this conversation, Councilmember Cram indicated that she thought that there was about a three-story difference between the elevation on Riverside and the former Montgomery Inn site. Can you tell me, is that a one-story drop, two stories, three stories? Because I think it's important to note that there's a significant drop there. And if you're measuring stories from Riverside, that's very different than measuring the stories from the Montgomery Inn site.
So I don't have the number memorized here. I'm looking at Dub Discovery just to see. So it looks like the grade at Riverside, hold on, let me pull this over here and then you can see what I'm looking at. So at, along Riverside, it's at 792. As you move up toward where Montgomery Inn is, again, these lines are pretty close together because there is a pretty significant grade change there. So, I mean, it can be upwards of maybe 818. So, yeah, it's about, I don't know, 20, 20-plus feet difference from, from the street up to-
How much was that?
Yeah, about 20, 20-plus feet.
And how many feet are in a story?
So that depends on your building type.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
What's that?
I would say about 12 on average floor to floor.
So roughly two stories. So if the building were six stories-
Two of those.
There would be four stories from, at the Montgomery Inn level, there'd be four stories there.
What they measure from? They measure from grade. So, you have the grade at Riverside, but then if you have the grade, if the grade is higher, then you measure from whatever the highest grade is. So if you start your six stories at Montgomery, right now Montgomery Inn is two and a half stories.
Start at Riverside, six stories starting at Riverside.
Yeah, so if you, yes, if you were at, if the building was on the parcel that was, or the area that's on Riverside, yes, you would measure the number of stories and the height of that, at that, at that grade.
At the Riverside grade.
Yes.
But if you built, if the, if you started your building where Montgomery, if you tore down Montgomery Inn and started it there, you could go six stories up from there.
True.
Right. But if you start it closer to Riverside, I mean, if, if you were to come up with a plan that has the building closer to Riverside, wouldn't you gain a story or two? Okay, thank you.
So the front door into Montgomery Inn is, looks like it's about 834.
Yeah, and the finished floor elevation of the houses, if you can scoot that over, about at 834, too, it looks like, or around there. Let me see here. As I run through the houses, let's see.
First residential's 836.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like they're within, pretty close to what the average grade is for that shops at River Ridge site.
I'll say, one of my concerns is that the way the Bridge Street code is laid out, if they bulldoze all the shops at River Ridge, they're going to have, they're going to most likely lay out a new street grid in there. There's going to be a new east-west street because you can only have your blocks so long, right? Is that correct, Jenny? So if you add a new east-west street, then you can put buildings to the south of that within that 10 to 20. So we're not guaranteed by that 0 to 15 frontage, that doesn't mean 161. We're going to add a new street grid. And what I'm worried about are buildings that would be south of a, a new east-west street that are, that could be six stories, starting at that grade at the 836, and could be six stories. And they're going to be four stories taller than these residents that spoke. And they're going to be looking down on these residents. And if, and it was correct, if you drive into their neighborhood, you can clearly see the top two stories of Sunrise. I mean, it's hu, it looks huge, and it's only three stories. So that is my concern. I just feel that it's in the best interest of the residents that we wait until we see, to rezone this, until we see a proposal. Because a building six stories at Riverside Drive, where the retention pond is, is probably totally fine. And if that came and asked for the rezoning then, I think it would just, I think it would be better and more reassuring to the residents if we knew what was going to be there.
Councilwoman DeRosa.
Yes, thank you. Jenny, last time we talked a little bit, and you were going to bring some definitions. What is a corridor building? Just to be clear, there's only one building type that would, in these definitions, if you go back to that list, that, that allows up to six stories. What is a corridor building?
So a corridor building is one of the various building types. It is meant, it's a mul, again, a multi-story building, looking at, it, it has to do with the form. And let me show you the Bridge Street code so you can see. So, as I mentioned, each of the building types has a layout that goes along with the particular building. And then there are requirements that, that I guess supplement that in terms of where it has to be located on the street, what the buildable area is, parking location, building height, which then speaks to that, the maximum number of stories and the minimum, maximum height of those stories at the ground level versus upper stories, what uses have to occupy, where they can be occupied within the building. And then it talks about the transparency entrances. So again, each building type, depending on what the use is of that, has its own set of standards. And as you'll see within this, so it has a multi-story building, which then has multiple building entrances. Again, this building is typically a larger, one of the larger buildings within Bridge Street. Again, it has the opportunity for stepping the building back as, as it gets taller. But it has that sort of primary frontage or building facade, I guess, along the frontage that you would see within Bridge Street. So there are a number of corridor buildings on the north side of 161.
So there really isn't a use requirement for a corridor building? This, this is just more, I'm looking at use and occupancy requirements, residential and general office.
Yeah, so in the neighborhood, it would dictate where, because again, these building types are permitted depending on all, for the Bridge Street zoning requirements. So whichever district, certain building types are permitted in certain ones. So in this instance, if there's a shopping corridor, and those are defined typically within the neighborhood, residential and office would be prohibited at the ground story. Again, I'd have to look at that neighborhood and see, I don't think that neighborhood map would, would have a specific shopping corridor within this particular area. So you could potentially have office and, and residential at the ground story. So it's only where that neighborhood would delineate it.
Would a hotel be considered a corridor building?
It could be. Again, it doesn't dictate what use, I mean, again, obviously, single-family residential attached or detached, that's pretty clear, or apartment, those are pretty clear. But the other more commercial building types would allow for a variety of uses. It ultimately comes down to how a building is designed, in that a lot of building types require a certain number of entrances. So again, you wouldn't want to pick a building type that requires one entrance every 50 feet. That's not really conducive to a hotel. So I'd have to look and see, and maybe, I don't know if Russ knows off the top of his head, what the AC hotel is. I would anticipate that would be a similar building type that would be selected should a hotel go on this site.
And one more question, if I could, please. The definition of a podium apartment?
So that is a building type where there is parking located under a apartment building. So it's sort of built in underneath.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Chris?
I, is it intended for the Grid Street Network that Stone Ridge Lane ultimately would come all the way through to this site?
Yes, and let me pull up the street network map. I was looking at that as well. So, again, Bridge Street, as Councilmember Cram said, it does intend for additional street connections to occur as development occurs. So you'll see at the bottom here of this map, it shows Stone Ridge Lane. Now, it shows a dotted line because that obviously isn't there. So it would be intended for Stone Ridge to be continued. And then there would be potential for, again, it shows Dale Drive, which is already existing, but then there being additional street connections. And where those line up, again, largely depends on how development is happening. But the Bridge Street code, again, depending on zoning and building type, would specify the maximum width of a block and the length of a block.
I guess I, I completely understand and am cognizant that you're allowed to ask for a rezoning without bringing a development forward. That's obeying the rules. I think this one is very sensitive because of proximity to neighbors. So it's challenging to do without having an application to respond to. However, it is still within the rules. I would just want to be very clear with whoever is going to develop this site, that this is a different Bridge Street, even though your zoning might say up to or could be. We would treat this as we would any development that comes into the city and require that they be sensitive to their neighbors and that, you know, that there's not a net negative impact. You know, you look at these, if it's a podium apartment building, right? The only thing worse than looking up at a residential unit that's towering over your house would be looking up at a car that would be, with headlights in the evening, that might be towering over your house. So I, I'm, I can be supportive of the rezoning, but I just want the applicant to hear loud and clear that because it says up to, it's likely not going to happen because of the proximity to the residential parcels immediately to the south. So, those are up to's, those aren't guarantees, and those aren't, you get this. That's the highest possible it could go. And I just want you to know that in my, for me, you probably can't on a significant portion of this parcel, or what will be a parcel, right now I understand it's several, but this development is, it's, you're not going to get the high end, certainly not adjacent to the residential neighborhood. And if that's, I just want you to hear loud and clear. And I understand that you're allowed to ask for this. You're totally within the rules. So, we need to balance those two things.
Councilwoman Alita.
Thank you. I really appreciate Chris's point. I, I think that does need to be said loud and clear. I'm happy to hear the applicant saying they want to work with the neighbors. That's a good thing. I think the other challenging part for me is, you know, we're told there's no concept, right? And then at Finance Committee, they actually put a thing on a map in this area as potential for future development. So that feels a little bit incongruous with me, and I would have preferred to either see that two weeks ago at the council meeting, or, or again, tonight, to sort of true up the information that we're getting. And if, and I get, that was just like a pie in the sky, let's throw it at the wall kind of thing, but it certainly sends a message that they've already got a concept in their mind about what they want to see there. So that's a real struggle for me, and I don't really want to see that happening again. I think Chris is right there within the rules. And I echo her sentiments, that, that just because it says up to, doesn't mean you're going to get it. And I want that to be very clear, because anything that comes in front of planning and zoning later on, I want them to be able to refer back to this meeting for guidance.
Any other comments?
You know, having been on planning and zoning for eight years, you know, I'm sort of wondering how you're going to develop this thing, because there's going to be some major restrictions. You guys are going to have to do a feasibility study to see if anybody's going to really want to invest in this property. Because you already know what the restrictions are, because the neighbors are here in, in full force and want their rights protected. So, and I know from just knowing a couple of them, that they're going to be analyzing this thing down to the nines. So, you know, and what Chris has said and Christina, that, you know, legally, you're allowed to do this zoning, and, and it comes with the recommendation from the staff. But also, the idea of the density, the height, and all the rest of it, is going to be, is going to come in through the sieve of the planning department, planning and zoning both. And it'll be interesting to see, you know, what, you know, feasibility-wise, if you can make this really work. So, so, you know, you know, I don't disagree that, no, you have the right to do this, and I, you know, and I think it could be an improvement over the existing shopping center, but I am too concerned about, you know, how the neighbors are going to accept this, and that's going to set the elevation and the heights of all your buildings.
I have one additional comment. So I just want to say, I, I am for the redevelopment. I like the fact that it gives more standards. I just, I would rather see the rezoning request with a concept plan. We get the chance to, if you do, if we redo the rezoning now, then the concept plan just goes to planning and zoning. We don't see it, unless a development agreement or something. So I'd rather wait till they do the rezoning and have, and be able to see the concept
Kathy.
Thank you. When I look at the current zoning requirements and the concerns about four and five stories, those are in the current zoning requirements now. So I think when a project comes before planning and zoning and council, the sensitivities are, are not going to be that different, save one story. And I'm not saying that's not important, but the issues will remain if a development comes under either of these two types, it sounds, it seems to me, types. For me, this, this change would allow some- For me, this, this change would allow some mixed use and some other types that I think the area wants. So I think in regards to height, it's going to be a conversation regardless, and I think that's a very important conversation. I'm not sure this change would, would stop that from happening. I mean, it's going to need to happen one way or the other. And I think this rezoning sets conditions that follow the spirit, and for that reason, it makes sense to me to move forward. But again, the, the conditions of stories' heights, that's going to have to be a discussion, regardless of the zoning state as it is, or moved forward. So for that reason, I'm supportive of putting the conditions in place to make the spirit of it work and continue to work on what are very important concerns of the neighborhood.
You know, one other aspect to this is, you know, living out here as many years as I have, Martin Road going up and down it frequently, the idea of connectivity for those people is really an important, to let them feel part of the community, that they can walk and access via bicycle or whatever into Bridge Park area, I think, well adds a lot of value to their homes. So, you know, when this thing, if this thing happens, you know, it's really important to me to see that that, that happens for them, so that they become more part of the neighborhood. Thank you.
My thoughts on this are a couple. The Stone Ridge being, being extended, to me, would create a sense that you might have to worry about a larger building closer to the neighborhood. I think it would be difficult to extend Stone Ridge because of the partial next to it, but my preference would be, if this were to be rezoned, that we don't chop up this partial in a street grid that would open up the ability to be able to put the taller buildings along the back edge of the property. If the intention here is to bring vitality to West Dublin, Granville Road, and protect the, the, the south side of the property, I could, I could go along with this rezoning. If we're just talking Riverside Drive in Dublin, Granville. But I think once you allow a street grid to go through, that opens you up legally to be able to put a larger building on the south side. And even though three stories is not very large, most of the buildings within Bridge Park are three to four. So I, I see great value in the rezoning piece. I also would like to have seen a concept plan, but I think it's very important here that, that this message, if we choose to rezone this, is that there is absolute sensitivity to height along the south side, and the intention of the Bridge Street District, new development really borders West Dublin, Granville Road, and Riverside Drive, and stays far, far away from the, right. Are there any other comments? So this is second reading, and are we prepared to call roll?
Ms. Cram?
No.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Ordinance four, two, zero, four, two, two.
Amending the annual appropriations ordinance for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022.
Our staff report is Finance Director Matt Stifler.
Good evening, members of council. There are no changes from the first hearing on this ordinance.
Lindsay, do we have any public comment on this one? All right. Council questions or discussions concerning this? None? Jenny, would you please call roll?
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ordinance zero, five, dash, two, two.
Providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $3,460,000 for the purpose of paying the costs of improving the municipal sanitary sewer system by extending certain sewer lines, repairing and lining certain existing sewer lines, reducing inflow and infiltration, and installing new sewer lines, new force mains, a lift station, and a pump station, together with all incidental work and related appurtenances thereto.
Once again, our staff report is Matt Stifler.
There are no changes from the first hearing on this ordinance. There was a follow-up memo included in your packet addressing some of the questions that were asked at the first hearing, and I'm available for any questions.
Any public comment on this one? Council questions or discussion? Jenny, would you please call roll?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Ordinance zero, six, two, two.
Providing for the issu-
Okay.
I just want to say that I have to recuse myself because the financing of this does service a project that services my residents.
Providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $2,725,000 for the purpose of paying the costs of improving the municipal waterwork system by upgrading the existing Tartan West Booster Station, adding a water quality monitoring unit to the post-road booster station, replacing water lines and installing water line extensions, together with all incidental work and related appurtenances thereto.
Our staff report is once again Matt Stifler.
Thank you, Mayor. There are once again no changes to this ordinance.
Public comment, Lindsay? Are there any council questions or discussions concerning this? Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Ordinance zero, seven, dash, two, two.
Providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $2,850,000 for the purpose of paying the costs of refunding bonds previously issued by the city for the purpose of paying, paying the costs of various public infrastructure projects.
Staff report once again is Matt Stifler.
Once again, no changes. Thank you.
Lindsay, do we have any public comment? Are there any council questions or discussions concerning this? Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ordinance zero, eight, dash, two, two.
Providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $5,700,000 for the purpose of improving the municipal parks and recreation system by paying a portion of the costs of constructing the Riverside Crossing Park, together with all incidental work and related appurtenances thereto.
Matt?
No changes.
Lindsay, are there any, is there any public comment? Do we have any questions, discussion? No. Jenny?
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner? Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ordinance zero, nine, dash, two, two.
Adopting and enacting a supplement to this code of ordinances for the city of Dublin, Ohio.
Our staff report this evening is Assistant Law Director Thad Boggs.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no change to the staff report. I would only note that there was a question at the first, or at the introduction of this, that dealt with whether it affected income tax collection or credits. Our office looked at this, as well as the income tax administrator, and determined that it does not.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? No. Do we have any additional questions, Chris?
I would just, I know Jennifer's not here tonight, but we did communicate back and forth a couple of times, so I appreciate their efforts in getting those clarifications.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ordinance ten, dash, two, two. Introduction, first reading, public hearing, ordinance ten, dash, two, two.
Amendments to Section 153.158 regarding the temporary sign provisions of the City of Dublin zoning code.
Introduction? Okay. Our staff report is Jenny Roush.
Good evening again. As you mentioned, this is a proposed code amendment regulating temporary signs, specifically the non-residential-for-sale-for-leasing-period sign. As council may recall, we were before you in January of this year to raise this topic. This was largely based on concerns that were expressed to staff from the commercial real estate representatives in relation to, again, this non-residential-for-sale-for-lease sign, particularly related to the duration requirements that were adopted as part of the 2001 amendments to our temporary sign code. As part of that, we had the opportunity to meet with those representatives and do some benchmarking, and had brought that forward to council for discussion. And at that time, council referred the topic to the Community Development Committee in February, and we were able to have a discussion with the committee. We had a number of our commercial real estate representatives here for that meeting, and then we do have some also present tonight to answer any questions that you have. Our goal with that meeting with the Community Development Committee was to provide some opportunity for discussion related to the concerns of the commercial real estate group, and present a proposal that attempted to look at their concerns while also trying to balance council's direction and concerns, which was the impetus, or partially the impetus, for the update to the temporary sign code, largely related to sign clutter and aesthetics, and how can we tackle that, you know, as, as we move forward with this code. So what we presented to the committee, and what the ultimate result of that is what's up here on your screen in a overview, and then I'll go through some detailed information on the next slide. So looking at what the proposed amendment, allowing for one sign per parcel with the addition of another sign for parcels that have freeway frontage, that way there's additional visibility, retaining the size, signs, and heights for this particular sign compared to the approved regulation, so wanting to remain consistent with the reduced sign size, but then looking at a uniform sign design as an, as an opportunity to address the aesthetic component of this. Again, knowing that there were concerns raised by council about how we would be able to regulate that, so that they all look consistent and have a similar size and color scheme, and the details related to that. So that was presented to the committee. Their preference was a green background with white lettering. I have some graphics that I can show you. And then the outcome in terms of duration was looking at the opportunity for a one-year duration with a yearly renewal. And that was largely related to information that was included in your packet, and then also discussed with the committee, related to how commercial property and commercial real estate is marketed, and that there's not a single clearinghouse similar to what you would have for residential development, or residential homes, excuse me, and wanting to provide that flexibility for commercial property owners and real estate representatives to be able to market their property, and also their desire to have signs available on-site as driving around and looking at properties and understanding what the context of the properties that they're potentially looking at, how that relates to the existing properties in the area, so they could get a feel for what that character is, as well as the timetable needed to sell or lease, which is, information from them was between 12 months and 18 months to do that. So having the shorter timeframe that the current code has was really challenging. So that's the proposal that was brought forward to the committee, and what is being recommended. And I thought it might be helpful to look at in detail what, so we had a previous code that is the far-left column that talks about what was approved, or excuse me, what was existing prior to then. The middle column is what council approved in 2021, and then the far-right column is what's proposed. So the general requirements remain the same from the 2021 adopted version. In terms of number, as I mentioned, we are recommending one per parcel plus one additional freeway sign, which is an increase in number from the current 2021 version, but again, wanting to provide that additional visibility on the freeway. In terms of sign size and height, as I mentioned, we're retaining ground signs at that 16 square feet with four feet in height for signs that have, I should say, non-freeway frontage, the top box. So again, in a area where you're not fronting the freeway, you would have that same size as what the current code says, and then along the freeway frontage, we would allow for an increase, again, given your proximity to the interstate and the speed in which you're driving, you need to be able to have more visibility. In terms of the wall and the window sign size, that stays the same. And then, as I mentioned, duration, the current code, as it's written, is a 30-day timeframe with then 90 days, no more than 90 days total in a year, which, as I mentioned, has caused a lot of concern with how commercial properties are leased or sold. So the committee recommendation, as I mentioned, was one year with a year renewal. And then we landed on a uniform sign design, as I mentioned, with a green background with the white lettering. It would be post-mounted. We have specified a material for that, and that logos and branding would be able to be permitted, but it would have to fit within that color scheme. So we brought forward to the committee a variety of designs, and the top one was our understanding of what the committee's preference was. So again, with the green background and the white lettering, we showed also then a bronze option and a black option. The green was what was brought before the committee and recommended to council. So with that, staff recommends approval of this ordinance at the second reading, which is scheduled for April 11th. And as I mentioned, I have two representatives here. Brent Swander, he's the CEO of Columbus Realtors, he's here, as well as Mike Capella, he is with CBRE as well. So they're happy to, they've been working with us throughout this process, and they were before council in January, and then Brent was with us at the committee. So happy to answer any questions.
Any public comment on, on this? Lindsay?
We do have one that was submitted online. This is from Brian Griffith at 3852 Carberry Drive, who opposes ordinance 10, dash, two, two amendments to sign ordinance 153 dot 158. Specifically, I am opposed to amending 153, 158, I-5 to remove the reasonable limits on the duration of sign displays. The proposed revision will undo these restrictions and leave our community once again with perpetual display of temporary real estate signs. These signs detract significantly from the otherwise clean and consistent appearance of the city.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
We did have Mike Capella sign in.
All right. Good evening. If you'll just state your name and your address, please.
Hi, everyone. Mike Capella with CBRE, really here to express three things. First, I just want to say thanks to the planning committee and also the CDC for their cooperation and collaboration. It's been fantastic to work with everybody. Two, really here to answer any questions that the council may have. And then three, we would ask for your support to move forward with the proposals for the sign ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion this evening? Oh, I'm sorry. All right.
Good evening, Brent Swander. I'm actually at 5515 Lakemore Court East, and I am the CEO of Columbus Realtors. So we are actually a professional trade organization that represents about 9,800 Realtors in central Ohio, and I want to thank Jenny and Megan for their time in the CDC. The average time on market for a commercial property is about 19 and a half months, compared to in Dublin, I did our data today, it's like 16 days. So when we talk about length on, length on market, we're 19 and a half months versus 16 days. We had some discussion previously as to why there isn't a multiple listing service for a commercial property. So some history on that. The multiple listing service actually goes back to 1920, the 1920s, if you will, and actually requires, and this is what most acknowledge in the, in the residential market, requires an offer of compensation and cooperation, meaning that a selling broker will pay a buying broker for that compensation, will pay compensation to that when you, when you bring a buyer to the property. That is not the case in the commercial market. Prior to 2017, Columbus Realtors actually had Excelligent, which many of our municipalities actually list their properties, Dublin, One Columbus, they're all part of, we're all part of that. Excelligent went bankrupt in December of 2017, leaving a void, if you will, in that single space. So different, different companies came in and grabbed market share. There's Loop Net, CoStar, Catalyst, Crexie, and that's why that void is there. And because there's no required compensation, it's And because there's no required compensation, it's difficult to coerce or ask commercial brokerages to participate in one single MLS or information exchange, if you will. So the MLS has been around forever, and actually, the Department of Justice is looking at it for antitrust concerns because you're requiring somebody to pay compensation. There's actually several federal class action lawsuits that are out there as well. So it's difficult to say you must belong to a CIE when there's no compensation and cooperation. So that's conversations we've had, but there's some history there as well. So 90 days in commercial world, as our commercial practitioners can attest to, is quite simply far too short. As a Dublin resident, I understand the concern of clutter, and I think that the one, the one sign per parcel versus one sign per frontage will go a long way. The standard color will clean that up as well. So 90 days is, quite frankly, far too short when your days on market is almost 20 months.
Thank you. Discussion?
Just, pardon me, one quick point of clarification. So the logos would not be full color?
No, they would have to be the white lettering as well.
And it would be one per sign, or could they be multiple per sign?
We didn't necessarily specify. It could be, typically, it's 20% of what the permitted sign area is, so I would assume we would have that same standard. We could define that more clearly for the second reading, what those dimensions might be.
Super. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Grooms?
There was also conversation relative to that on the number of names on the sign, the individual names. So I think that you were getting some additional information relative to that, or maybe Brent had offered to provide some information.
So I can comment on that real quickly, briefly, council member, is that per Ohio revised code, the broker, there's a law in Ohio, equal prominence, so the broker's name has to be equal or more prominent than every agent's name. I know, I think in CDC, we talked about, do you need one, two, or three? And I'm going to allow Mike to talk about how that works with teams, but I do think it's important for council to know that the brokerage name has to be equal or more prominent than any single name.
And all I would add on that is I think we just wanted to, we're on board with the, you know, the sign all looking exactly the same. I think what we want to do is just make sure that what's displayed on the sign is represented back to you all with what we have to do according to the law. And then I do think we need to think through multiple names on there, so we can come back to you with a couple of different views of what that will look like.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Well, first, I will comment, we can't really regulate what they put on the sign as far as wording. So whether it's three names or five, that's not really an issue. I think it comes down to how much space we build. But since I wasn't on the committee, I just have a few questions. Do we have a fee that goes with the renewal of these? Do we charge for this?
We do. So you would pay the initial, which I don't know what that number is off the top of my head, but I could bring that back to you. So there's an initial sign fee, then you would, on a yearly basis, when you would renew it, you would pay that same fee?
Okay. I mean, it's no longer a temporary sign when we renew it every year. So, I mean, we're taking that away, and what, I didn't know if there was any consideration of, do we limit the number of their temporary signs because they've chose to add a new temporary? I mean, this is not, I always say, do we limit the number of permanent signs? Because this is now a permanent sign if they renew it every year for 30 years, like the signs we have out there now. So I didn't know if there was any thought to that. I mean, this is an additional sign that they get in a top of their normal permanent signs.
Well, they will have to display that they have a product on the market, so that's new. So before, the signs would be there in perpetuity because we didn't ask if, do you really have any space for lease? They could put these signs up.
Do they have to prove that every renewal?
Part of the application process will be an indication of the space that is for lease in that, and that will be reviewed upon their renewal.
Okay, so that's reviewed yearly?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so then we're not setting a max to the number of years? It can now be a permanent sign?
As long as there's space inside the building that is available for lease.
All right, thanks.
All right. Council?
No, I just want, I want to thank you folks for coming up and clarifying all the questions for the CDC, and I think you've done a good job because we had a lot of questions like you did, Amy, on the same issues, and I think you answered them all correctly. Thank you.
Councilmember DeRosa?
Thank you. I do think a standardization will improve at least one of the steps, and that is the visual look. I would very much like to see, as we're working at this, that we couldn't take another step forward as part of this or add on to this and really begin to look at technology solutions. I mean, simply having QR codes on these signs that could point them to some database, whichever one, they must have something to put it in, and/or QR codes potentially on their permanent signs. So is there not a technology answer, or are we not close to the verge of a technology answer where you could do that? And I believe when we looked, QR codes are permitted on permanent signs. So maybe there's a way to move from this temporary to the permanent with technology. And if indeed they have to, upon renewal, say what's for rent or for lease, hopefully that there could be an electronic solution to this. I mean, it could be an advantage to the community. I appreciate very much your background on the databases that exist, et cetera, so forth. But if we're going to collect that information anyway, is there not an opportunity? So my ask would be, I think it's a step forward, and I'd support that, but not to stop there, but to put some effort to using what we now have at our fingertips that maybe we didn't have a while ago, to not only move this forward, but also potentially provide some competitive opportunity here. I would hate to see us stop at this step one when I think we're really not solving maybe a bigger opportunity. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Sure. I mean, I would say that we feel like signs are just one part of the marketing, and so certainly not the most important, but important. And so the QR codes actually were, I think, way more adopted over the last couple of years than they were when they first rolled out, you know, five or 10 years ago. The issue with the QR codes for the temporary signs is that most of the, as we're looking to capture the person that's driving by or looking for property, and it's just difficult to do that through a QR code. And then I would say that some of the properties don't actually have permanent signage, and so that is some of the purpose of the temporary signage, just to be able to broadcast that there is space available for leasing that particular property. But I would say we're always open to, you know, evolving as far as, you know, whatever we can do to get a space leased, we're going to look at investing in to make that happen.
My guess is there's somewhere that QR code could go. That's my guess, yeah. That maybe, again, just finding ways to get us out of the sign business over time.
Sure.
Thank you.
You know, I really appreciate that the number of signs and that the aesthetic of the sign within the city is going to improve drastically. We have just, we have just a haphazard look of signs, and they don't look very good, and this is a huge step. And I really appreciate, I think our goal here is to be sure that we get these spaces leased here in Dublin. I like Councilmember DeRosa's idea because the Economic Development Department keeps a list that you can go to our website, and if there's a way, the technology, even though you need it to drive by and see, but if someone stops and does a QR code and is able to link to our database and our Economic Development Department can help you lease that space, that's just a win for everybody, right? So I think that this has gone a long way to make this a better look for the city. Thank you.
Just one final comment. I mean, the city is very interested in, you know, with people working at home now, to do whatever we can to try to assist you to keep your buildings filled up. I mean, we get it, and we're here to try to help you without ruining the aesthetics of our community. So thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second reading, public hearing scheduled for April 11th meeting. Ordinance 11-22.
Executed except necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire certain property located on Riverside Drive identified as Franklin County, parcel number 27300839600 from Thomas A. McDowell, successor trustee of the Diane Elaine McDowell Revocable Living Trust under agreement 212, 2020, and Thomas A. McDowell for the public purpose of constructing a new shared-use path which shall be open to the public without charge.
I want to do so.
Thank you. Our staff report is Engineering Director Paul Hammersmith. Paul?
Good evening, members of council. The Riverside Drive Shared Use Path East, Section 1, project will provide a shared-use path and extend a water line along the east side of Riverside Drive from Emerald Parkway to 500 feet north of Hannah Hills Drive. And I did provide an exhibit on the screen for you. Acquisition of property interest from 11 property owners along Riverside Drive is necessary to construct a path and water line. The portion of shared-use path constructed between Emerald Parkway and Bright Road will be located within a strip of right-of-way appropriated through this ordinance. The appropriation of right-of-way and acquisition of a temporary easement from the McDowell property are the last needed for the project, as detailed in the staff report and shown on the exhibit on the screen. The city has participated in good-faith discussions with the property owner and has arrived at mutually agreeable terms. The current schedule is to advertise the project for bid this spring. Once the construction contract is executed, construction activities are expected to commence in June 2022. This ordinance authorizes a city manager to execute all necessary conveyance documents and contracts to formally acquire the necessary property interest. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance at the second reading and public hearing on April 11th, 2022. I'd be glad to answer any questions from council.
Do we have any public comment on this one? Lindsay? All right. Council questions or discussion? Councilmember Graham?
I didn't have all those. I'm sorry.
Oh, Councilmember Graham? Okay.
Paul, can you go back to your first slide?
Yes. I'll try to.
Maybe.
What if somebody doesn't like me? One second, please, because I closed it. Give me...
I was optimistic, thinking there must be no questions.
We kind of bury these kind of deep. All right, sorry. There you go. Apologize for that. There.
The bump outs on parcel indicated here, 3 and 11, are those drain bodies?
On 3 and 11?
Yeah, the, see the, along Riverside Drive, there's kind of a bump out.
That might be, or other obstacles on the property.
But I know for sure 11 is a culvert that goes onto the road right there.
I think that is true.
Oh, you know what? There's culvert openings on the other side. So they are drain, incoming drain bodies that bleed to the, okay.
And that's actually true on the McDowell property, the exhibit I just previously showed you. We're actually providing additional area around a culvert that exists for buildings like Creek. So when you look at this southern portion, where we actually bump out a little further, the actual culvert underneath Riverside Drive was not within right-of-way. So we actually remedied that problem with this acquisition as well.
But the path will stay at grade, and you'll just extend that culvert over or whatever?
Yeah, there's actually going to be a pedestrian bridge in that area as well for the shared-use path. So it really does both, provides for that pedestrian bridge and also the culvert.
Okay, thank you.
And my question, Paul, is where is the path in relation to the little cemetery? And did we do like ground penetrating radar? Because I know it's not confirmed that we have actual bears there, but did we do any ground penetrating radar?
We did not, but we actually have records on that cemetery that, you're right, it really, there's no bodies that exist there. We're actually going to remove the markers and the material that's there presently. The path will be constructed and then reinstall that back because it's dropping about 18 inches to two feet right there.
So you're just going to move it back? Did we buy enough right-of-way to move it back? Are we moving it back onto his property?
We're going to leave it in its present location, which was within right-of-way, but it'll be within the new right-of-way that we're acquiring.
Okay, so you're slightly back from where it is, but within...
Yeah, I think presently, it's just, I mean, it's...
Just a marker?
...on a fringe.
Yeah. But, so did we ever do, we didn't confirm that there's nothing there, though.
We did not. But again, even with the grades, I mean, we're confident we're not going to get into anything.
You're not into the side?
Right.
I just don't want you exhuming any bodies we didn't know were there. We didn't do any radar there.
Prefer not to do that as well.
Okay.
Good call, Amy. Any other questions, questions or discussion? The second reading, public hearing is scheduled for the April 11th meeting. Ordinance 12-22.
To remove special assessments previously levied for certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District.
I want to do so.
Thank you. Our staff report is our Economic Development Administrator, Sarah O'Malley.
Good evening, members of council. The building ownership at 5500 France Road has requested the use of PACE financing for its energy improvement projects. This particular property earmarked the city's first PACE project that we ever did back in 2017. The ownership of 5500 France has recently sold the building, and so they are, excuse me, requested to pay off their PACE financing for the property, which requires Dublin City Council to pass an additional ordinance to remove the special assessments that were previously passed in 2017. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any public comment? No. Any questions? No? All right, the second. Thank you, Sarah. Second reading and public hearing is scheduled for the April 11th meeting. Resolutions, introduction and public hearing, Resolution 13-22.
Appointing members to the various boards and commissions of the city of Dublin.
I want to do so.
Thank you. Our report is by Vice Mayor DeRosa, Chair of the Administrative Committee.
Thank you very much. Every year, city council reviews the membership of our boards and commissions as terms expire on March 31st. This year, we had several vacancies created by terms expiring on March 31st, 2022, as well as a resignation on the Community Services Advisory Commission for an unexpired term ending March 31st, 2023. I'm delighted to say that we had a really wonderful and large pool of applicants, that council had an opportunity to spend time with and meet, and we're delighted and happy to say that we're bringing forth a set of recommendations for your approval this evening. The administrative committee and then council conducted interviews on March 1st and 2nd, respectively, and I'm pleased to bring forth the following appointments and reappointments for council's approval. They are Jamie Chinook and Kathy Harder to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term expiring March 31st, 2026; Hillary Demasur and Michael Jewell to the Architectural Review Board for a three-year term expiring March 31st, 2025; Patrick Murphy and Joseph Nye to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a three-year term expiring March 31st, 2025; Vicky Von Sadowski, oh, excuse me, Sadowski, to fill the unexpired term for the Community Services Advisory Commission, effective immediately and expiring on March 31st, 2023; Tanner Pryor and Vivek Arushalam to the Community Services Advisory Commission for a three-year term expiring March 31st, 2025; Betty Clark McLachlan to Visit Dublin, Ohio Board for a three-year term expiring March 31st, 2025; Sandra Peskarsik to Dublin Arts Council for a two-year term expiring March 31st, 2024; Mark Heater to the Personnel Board of Review for a three-year term expiring March 31st, 2025; Bill Root and Dale Saylor to Tax Board of Review for a two-year term expiring March 31st, 2024. Thank you again to everyone applied and to our nominees this evening, and we look forward to welcoming them to our boards and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions? No? Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa? Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
All right, Resolution 14-22.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a maintenance agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the US-33 State Route 161 Post-Road Interchange Upgrade Project.
I'll do so.
Thank you. Our staff report is by Deputy City Manager Robert Rantz.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening, council members. The city of Dublin is working cooperatively with project partners at the Ohio Department of Transportation and Union County to improve the interchange at US-33, SR-161, and Post Road. As a reminder, the bid was conditionally awarded to complete general construction last week. The project anticipates construction starting in May 2022, roadway substantial completion in November 2024, and landscape completion in June 2025. As part of the design, the city included enhanced aesthetic and landscape features, including decorative bridge elements, street lighting, post-mounted signs, and overhead sign support painting. Consistent with past agreements, Dublin is agreeing to increase maintenance as a result of the enhanced aesthetic and landscape features. Per the agreement, Dublin will maintain stone-clad retaining walls and decorative bridge elements, landscaping to include mowing, weeding, and plant material maintenance to the city standards, the post-mounted sign, street lighting, and overhead sign support painting on US-33. ODOT agrees to reimburse the city for routine lighting maintenance and to maintain any structural repairs to the interchange. Staff does recommend approval of Resolution 14-22, a maintenance agreement with ODOT for the US-33, SR-161, Post-Road Interchange Upgrade Project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any public comment on this, Lindsay? No. Questions for Robert? Any? I guess not. It's a beautiful landscape piece, though. It's going to be a gorgeous interchange. Be really nice. Hopefully, they'll take good care of it.
Absolutely.
All right. Jenny, would you please call roll?
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Other business, city entryway signs. Our staff report is by Robert.
Thank you, and good evening again. By way of background, at the October 11, 2021, city council meeting, city council referred the issue of entryway signs to include standard entryway signs as well as monument signs to the Community Development Committee. The CDC considered this issue at both its November 30, 2021, meeting and the February 22, 2022 meetings. The CDC has recommended enhancements to both the standard entryway signs and monument signs, and I'll review both of those this evening. I wanted to add these two slides to this presentation to just kind of give the context and a reminder of where we stood when this was referred to the CDC. The current entryway signs, and you can see some examples on the screen, are dated. They're not standard. As you can see, there's several different types of signs that we deploy throughout the city, and they do not conform to the city's current branding. Additionally, the level of landscaping around the sign varies throughout the location, the locations throughout the city. Some signs do conform to what we would, I think, expect in terms of our landscaping maintenance, and some do not. And so we considered some options at the October 11 meeting. And this was what was proposed at the October 11 meeting. And so the council voiced some concerns with the font, the look of the accolades, and other issues, which is why the item was referred to the CDC. The CDC at both the meetings went through, and I'm calling these the standard entryway signs for lack of a better word, but at the November 30 meeting of the CDC, the CDC considered several different fonts and settled on Lucida Bright, which you see on the options on the screen, as well as shadowing on the letters and pedestal signposts. Additionally, the CDC recommended to remove the accolades from the signs as presented on October 11, and to, in terms of the accolades specifically to high school champions, to consider a champions' park concept, which is still at the committee level right now, and we're working on the design for that, and move the recognition of champions from the signs themselves to a champions' park. So at the February 22 meeting, these were the options which we came back for the CDC to consider, and the CDC is recommending the option that you see on the screen. So the signpost itself is consistent with the current wayfinding signs that you see throughout the city, which provides that consistency. The CDC determined that it would be more in keeping with the city's standards to go with this type of sign rather than the standard signpost, which is deployed right now with the two posts. The CDC is also recommending that we fabricate these signs in-house, and you can see on the easel in front of you, this is a mock-up that was done by the sign shop. It will be honed and completed if this is approved by the council, but this is an example of what our sign shop is able to do, and the CDC felt that this was a good quality and a good standard, and so, and then having a contractor installing the signposts. So in terms of cost, you can see that each sign is estimated to cost approximately $7,100. We're looking at 25 different locations throughout the city. After you add on estimated contractor costs and contingency, which is important, obviously, in this market, we're estimating approximately $227,000 in total cost for complete deployment throughout the city for the new signs. The CDC did recommend a phased implementation plan over the next five years to be absorbed into the city's operating budget, which would increase approximately $45,000 to $50,000 annually. We're going to go over monument signs as well, but I think this might be a good time to stop and answer any questions the council might have about these signs in particular.
Are there any, is there any public comment? Questions? Councilman Keeler?
So I see there are two panels. There's a black panel and then the sign itself. How are the two fused or laminated together?
I'm going to ask Jeanne Willis from the Department of Transportation and Mobility to come up, and she's over the sign shop. She'll be able to answer that question.
Gorilla glue.
Good evening, members of council. The signs will be attached via rivets. It's our standard sign attachment methodology, and it's also what we do in Bridge Park.
Any other question? I had a question for you. What's the, it doesn't show the final height of the sign. It shows a person standing next to it.
Sure. It'll be the current height of the sign, which is approximately five feet tall. And so that's kind of the idea. And so five to six feet, and I'm looking, yes, it's going to be five to six feet tall.
And that's about what we do right now?
Yes. It's what the current height of the signs are throughout the city.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I had two questions. So how does this size of the sign compare to like our park-size signs?
I would say that it's slightly smaller. I mean, in terms of the overall sign itself, the font is probably consistent, but the sign itself is probably slightly smaller than what you see at the entry to the parks.
So why would that be? I'm just curious. Why would the park signs be larger than the welcome-to-Dublin signs? Was that discussed, or is it an aesthetic thing, or?
We feel that this, it's really an aesthetic thing. We feel that the shape of the sign is aesthetically pleasing, the size of the sign is consistent with the sizes that we currently have, but aesthetically is a good look. But that particular question was not discussed.
Yeah, I just noticed as I'm out and about, the park signs are pretty good size. So I was just curious about that.
We did discuss revisiting
Yes.
all of the park signs throughout the community.
Okay.
That's probably going to be the next apple we'll take a bite at once this is finished, because we were looking at branding and things throughout the community, and many of them are, well, they're, they can be inconsistent depending on when the park came on, and they can, you know, not be representative of the community largely. So that was brought up, and we did commit to following up with that, if I'm correct.
That is correct, and I will bring that issue forward at a future council meeting for referral again to a committee.
So that was the consistency. Then you'll get that. Okay. And then my second question is, why, if we, I don't know, perhaps we have money in the budget, why spend five years to do it?
We can certainly, it was the desire of the committee. We can certainly consider that as we go forward, but I think the idea was that we're going to have to regularly replace these signs as it is. So get into a good program of installation and then replacement, and then by the time that we get to the end of the initial installation, then we're going to have to come back and probably start replacing again. So it was to get into that maintenance cycle that we're going to have to address in the future as it is.
Councilman Reiner?
The example we have here, we're really using the example in your photograph, not the example, because the scale between the black and the green is huge in this, and it's much more subtle and nicer on the actual picture, right?
It is. That's a great point, and thank you for that. We wanted to provide this as a mock-up just to see the real-life-looking thing, but yes, the black will be, the black behind, you can't see my mouse, but the black behind the green sign will be smaller. It won't be quite as thick around the green sign. That's correct. Thank you.
And then we talked about the shadow pattern on the letters, just increasing them just ever so much so that the letters pop out more.
Absolutely, and we've already taken a look at that, and that will 100% be what we do.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and my question is similar to his. The proportions on this seem different. This seems like it has more length to it, not quite as squatty as this. So I'm assuming that the proportions that we see here are going to be the proportions of the new sign.
Yes.
Okay. And I tend to agree. I think that there should be some thought about putting the signs in all at the same time. It just doesn't make sense if our concern is that we have a mismatch of signs. We're going to have a mismatch of signs for five more years.
Sure.
If we do it the other way, so. Any other?
One other comment. In the picture, is there a finial or something we could put on the top of this, or no?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Is there a finial on the top of the sign? You know how it's chopped?
No, we were planning on having this look. We weren't considering a finial on the top of it currently.
Okay.
Is that a cap at the top that'll be there then?
Correct.
Okay. You could get a decorative cap, I suppose, but that's what we had seen was a cap like this.
Yeah, something we didn't get into, really, is how we were going to cap the top of this post.
Is there a cap on the current signs that we have for wayfinding? So you were trying to be consistent with those, is that it?
There are some shamrock, there are some Celtic knots in the historic district. So that's, we could look at something if we wanted to.
The finials on the top of the sign.
There we go. Thank you. Ah. So yes, we do have finials on the tops of our wayfinding signs in the historic district. If you would like for us to explore the use of those on top, I mean, it would change the look of this aesthetic fairly significantly if you chose to go down that path. And it would also add a pretty substantial cost, as those were custom-made for Dublin through the wayfinding contracts.
I kind of like the simple, flat design. I like the cap. I mean, the thought of a Celtic knot right over the shamrock would be distracting, I think, a bit much. I kind of like the cap the way it is. Something right about the shamrock.
I think we have consensus on that. That looks pretty good. The cap's nice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, wow.
I do. There's a second part of this presentation. I do just want to make sure that I'm hearing the consensus from the council regarding the deployment of these, as that this is something that the council, and perhaps this can be considered as part of a motion, but would like done all at once, and we can consider that in an upcoming budget cycle, or if this is something that we wanted to go with a phased plan on.
You know, we could look at if we end up doing the park signs, maybe the thought was is that we would, there was 28 signs, how many?
Twenty-five. There's 31 total signs, but 25 standard, six monument.
So we were, the thinking was is that each sign would have a lifespan of about five years, so that every year, for predictive budgeting purposes, you would have a replacement schedule. I mean, we could still put them all in, and then, and the unfortunate thing about that is they have to be replaced all at the same time. But if we were looking, going to look at park signs and things like that, maybe we could have, you know, a replacement schedule for signs that weren't just these, but were
Right.
more broad across the community. But we haven't, that hasn't been referred to our committee yet, so.
So can we get a head nod on how we feel about doing them all at once?
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the monument sign aspect of this. Just by way of background, again, what staff is proposing is to put monument signs at these six locations. We feel that these are highly-used locations, highly-visible locations, that currently do have entryway signs, but rather than sticking with this standard type of entryway sign, to do something more substantial and more unique to ensure that people know that they're entering Dublin as lots of people enter Dublin at these locations. So what staff provided to the CDC in November 30, 2021, was several concepts. We basically took what you see on the screen. We found some signs we thought were attractive, and then just overlaid the potential Dublin sign onto this. So this is not the font that we just agreed upon, but rather, this was the example that the committee saw on November 30. And the committee selected what you see on the screen, which is a sign with stacked stone columns, a wooden mast arm, and staff used that to drive its design to come back in February for further consideration. So in February, staff brought back these five designs that you see on the screen. And so you can see that they were all basically variations on the same type of concept, and we discussed each at length. And what the CDC ended up recommending was to try to go back to something that was more consistent with the original picture that we showed in November. So staff went back and has provided a design that is consistent with that picture. You can see that it is eight feet tall. I wanted to make sure that we had the dimensions on this, because they are different dimensions than our standard signs. And you can see there's a slight flare at the bottom, which is consistent with what, as we looked closer, as we really zoomed in on this picture, we think that really helps, that flare really helps fill it out at the bottom. And so it features Ohio limestone, stack stone, Ohio limestone, and a traditional stone cap. There was some discussion about the cap, but what was recommended by the CDC was this traditional stone cap. And so the CDC does recommend that design. You can see that the estimate is approximately almost $20,000 per sign with some landscaping costs, six locations, and then the contractor and contingency brings it out to about $162,000. We would recommend that this be considered as part of the upcoming CIP program and deploy all of these at once. So with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have on the monument signs.
Any public comment? Questions or discussion?
I just have a couple clarification questions, then. I see this here, it's in a flowerbed. So are we recommending that we're going to do this type of landscaping too around these signs?
Yes, we would, yes, we would recommend this type of landscaping. This specific example is probably the most unique in that this is at Emerald and Sawmill, so the flowerbed already exists. But there would be some landscaping consistent with this type of look and feel at each of the locations.
Okay, that, I was just curious if the price included, because like at Hard and Sawmill, there's no, there's no, currently no landscaping bed or wall or anything there.
Right.
So are we building all of that there then?
We would plan on putting a landscaping bed, and there is a cost estimate included, that's included in the cost estimate
Okay.
to make sure that we fill that out at each location.
Okay.
So I have a question, and it's basically just about the proportions. I'm noticing on the background monument sign slide, the proportions of the arm seemed longer than the one that you just showed, and I'm just kind of curious. To me, proportions are important. The other one looked small to me, and that the arm looked shorter. So, and I didn't see a dimension on that. And then also, is lighting included in the cost of the?
We had not included lighting in the cost, and I could, we have Sean Kowetski, who's designed this, is here, and he could speak to the proportions. But we had not included lighting in the cost for this.
Okay.
Good evening. Yeah, the arm length, I mean, we can lengthen that out. I don't think that's an issue. We looked at it in the model and thought it was starting to kind of separate itself from the column a little bit much, but the aesthetic can be obviously lengthened and made more consistent with that image.
It's not that I'm proposing in particular. It just seems like that there were two different ones to look at, and then one had a light and one did not have a light. And, I mean, the, so... the, the, so, did you have some particular thoughts about whether there was lighting needed on this?
We, we talked a little bit, but it never, we never actually took it to that level, I think in most of the locations, I believe we've got power through streetlights and stuff that we might be able to, to use, but that was a consideration, because we would have to tap into some kind of power in order to, to run it.
I mean, it, I noticed it had like a little, an angle lamp that came over it like that, I don't know if that changes the aesthetic, there are a multitude of ways to get light on something like that with LED and that sort of thing, so, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's something you'll come back with.
I think your point is well taken, we did not like, at, at least at staff level, this, this look with the, the lamps kinda coming over it, we felt that it took away from the sign itself, that being said, if the council would like us to, to find a way to light it, we can, if this is, if this design is one that the council is comfortable with, we can, when we bring this back as part of the CIP, we can include that cost as well, and, and consider it as, as part of the CIP process as well, if, if the desire is to, to light it, that would give us time to make sure that we can figure out the details with the power and the different ways to light it without putting the, the lights over top, if that's the desire.
And, and John, I wanna hear what he has to say about that, but I noticed that there was different kinds of stone, the traditional style, kind of Dublin stone here is the buff limestone, and I'm assuming that that's your intention here?
Yes.
And not a multicolored stone?
Correct.
Yeah, it would be nice to see kind of the final design, but, John?
You know, Jane, I think, I think there's just a subtle difference in the two signs if you go back and forth, I know, I don't know if it's the scale of the base that she was just mentioning, and then the out, the way the sign's a little farther out, so maybe there's an extra half a foot on, on the member that sticks out, to make, you know, but the scale of that is just a slight bit more pleasant than the scale of
That. Right.
You know, it's almost like the sign is too close to the standard, the post, so, it's just little subtleties like that that sort of make this thing work, one other thing about your landscape, now, just thinking about too, it's totally deciduous and, and seasonal, but is there a possibility just adding like four or five junipers around this thing, so there's something in the wintertime to carry it, and I'm sure you can still do that for the budget?
Absolutely, yes.
I read your budget, 15,000 bucks would easily cover that.
Yes, we can, we can do that.
Okay.
Kathy?
My only comment, I, well, two, the sign proportion to the post doesn't feel big enough, the sign doesn't feel big enough to be in proportion to the post, and it could very well just be this imagery, it just looks smaller, but I'm, I'm sure you guys will work that out as you do this, and I think if we would light it, we should go solar, right, I mean, we should find a way where we don't have to power it, I mean,
Sure.
I would think there would be an option in that regard, I think lighting would be nice, if, you know, if solar.
Is this something that you could bring, because the proportions seem to be a question here, is this something we have, anybody have a concern?
You know, I, I agree, we ought to pass it tonight, and then just sort of refine it, do you think the difference is the, the eight foot, and the other one was a little shorter, could that have been the difference?
I do, this, this one, again, I, having not been there, this is actually, we looked it up, this is a ski lodge in Vermont where we found this, so, but having, we, we looked it up, and this does appear to be a bit, a bit shorter to your point.
Yeah, it looks a little more robust and interesting, without all the Gaelic stuff we had on the other ones, and then the only other difference on this was, we looked at a stone cap versus this one has a copper cap that has aged.
Right.
And I think everybody likes the stone cap, right, all right, we're gonna trust that you are going to make this beautifully proportioned?
Yes.
And finalize it.
Yes, absolutely, and we, again, we can bring this back, cause as part of the CIP process, you can all see the final design.
Robert, there's no funding in this year's budget, right?
No, sir.
This is strictly a next-year start?
Yes, sir.
So there'll be, there'll be opportunity to come back with more detail.
So I'll make a motion to approve the CDC recommendation regarding city entryway signs, is there a second?
Second.
Jenny, could you please call roll?
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Sawmill Road, I-270 interchange landscape plan, staff report is by Robert.
Thank you again, at the October, again, at the October 11th, 2021 city council meeting, there was a request to consider an improved landscape plan at the interchange at I-270 and Sawmill Road, at the February 22nd, 2022 CDC meeting, the CDC considered three potential concept designs for the landscape improvements. I know these pictures are, are small, I'm gonna blow up the, the selected design, but you can see that there's three concepts that the, the CDC considered, each concept builds on the base design that you see in concept A, and then increases features, and then of course, cost as you go to concept B and C, so concept B, added stone triangular walls in the quads, and then concept C included those walls, as well as stormwater features in the, in the quads as well. The CDC is recommending concept A, concept A features large street trees along Sawmill Road, ornamental flowering trees, Scottish lace grass, evergreen shrubs, decorative grasses, large trees within the interchange, as well as refurbished lawn areas. So in the discussion with the CDC, primarily, we feel, the CDC felt that this option provides both a, a very nice improvement to what's currently at the interchange, while doing so in a cost-effective way. So you can see the, the cost estimate on this slide, the, the total cost considering contractor costs and, and a contingency, you'll notice the size of the contingency in this market, we, we added a, a pretty large contingency to try to be safe, comes out to approximately $564,000, which is what the cost estimate for this would be. So some considerations that the CDC specifically wanted to discuss with the entire council is that the eastern portion of this interchange is outside of Dublin's city limits, and so if we were to, to undergo this project, we would be spending funds to improve an interchange that is half in the city limits and half outside of the city limits, obviously, I think when most people come into it, they're not really paying a lot of attention to the city limits, but they just are that feeling that you're entering Dublin, which is why the CDC is recommending this, but did want to make sure that this was a specific discussion point that was brought up this evening with the full council. If directed to proceed with the landscape improvement, again, this is not something that was budgeted in this year's either operating or capital budget, and so this is something that would be recommended to consider as part of next year's capital budget, however, giving staff direction tonight, if the, the direction is to move forward, will allow us to start working with ODOT, we kinda went back and forth on when to broach this with ODOT, kind of a chicken and egg situation, we think that getting this direction, knowing that this is the direction that city council wants to go, we feel confident that these are the types of things, interchange improvements, that, that work with ODOT, and nevertheless, that would be our next step, and then we could again, come back as part of the capital budget process, and with a, a final design and recommendation and consideration for funding. So that being said, the, the question on the table is, of course, would the council like to proceed with pursuing I-270 and Sawmill Road interchange, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any comment on this, Lindsay? No, okay, council questions, discussions on this, Christina?
Thanks, what is the annual cost of this maintenance versus, let's, let's just say a, a flat mow?
Yeah, we, we estimate the annual maintenance cost to be about $55,000, we currently, as you may remember, as part of our highway mowing contract that was passed at the last council meeting, we are now doing both the west and east side of this interchange, which was, it was all wrapped up into the total cost of about $156,000, we estimate that about $30,000 to $40,000 of that was what the, the mow, just the mowing is going to be, so it's an additional probably $15,000 to what we'd be doing today. One, five, fifteen.
Thank you.
I just have one comment slash question, I, I think this is great, cause it is, it would look really weird to do one side of it.
Right.
And everyone gets off at the exit, you're right, and says, oh, I've reached Dublin, but has there been any thought, there's, there's a median that goes through the center, like on Sawmill Road here, that always looks like crap, I mean, it, it's not weed whacked and stuff, I don't think we do, it's because the city of Columbus, it's the city of Columbus, has there been any consideration, or, I mean, if we're gonna make this look so nice, and then that median just, I mean, you sit there waiting, get on the freeway, and you just look at the trash and the weeds and the con, that are growing through the concrete.
Thank you, council, we actually just took over, we're now taking over, starting this summer, in fact, we just got the MOU with Columbus to take over the, the median maintenance on Sawmill Road in, in this interchange as well, that's right.
Okay, great, that's.
We, we completely agree with you.
Great, thank you.
It's ama, I just have to say this out loud, it's amazing what a little paintbrush and paint and a street sweeper and litter pickup and grass mowing can do, it goes a long way.
Yeah.
That's all I'll say.
It will look great.
I'm just kinda curious, you know, normally, if we weren't doing this, this would be Columbus's responsibility or ODOT's responsibility to mow and maintain, who, whose responsibility? I'm curious.
That would be ODOT to, to, to mow and maintain, if, if, I, I wanna make sure that I'm speaking correctly, to, ODOT would be mowing and maintaining this interchange if we hadn't taken over, yes, that's correct.
Right, right, and then normally, does ODOT ever participate in landscape costs on their interchanges?
No.
They do not?
Just to, just, no.
Like even when you drive down the freeway, you see the pretty little meadow grass, I didn't, no, not even meadow grass.
And you can't, no, and you can't blame them really, cause if they do it for one, they're gonna have to do it for everybody, and so that would be a lot, so.
You know, obviously, this is a major improvement, I think of it as how all of us, sometimes we have a, a really pretty front porch, we go out and sweep the street because we want the interest to our home to look really nice, it's kinda the same thing, I, I can justify spending some money outside of our city limits because it is an approach, it is the main exit in, entrance ramp into, into the city, it's one of the, one of the two, I think that we really need to take care of our front porch, so, all right, any other questions or discussions? Okay.
Mayor, you said it perfectly, that's what the committee was thinking, thank you.
Let's see, where are we here, okay, I will make a motion to direct staff to move forward with proposed landscape improvements at Sawmill Road, I-270, is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Jenny, would you please call roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
We are at staff comments.
Good evening, members of council, just, just a couple comments, I want to take the opportunity to, again, express appreciation to staff and council, and everyone who made the state of the city successful, thanks especially to communications, public information staff for all their effort in preparing for that, and of course, council members, and thanks to the public for attending that, and all the presenters, I wanna thank the event staff and all the staff that supported them in the planning and agility, I guess is where I'm looking for, the agility adaptation, and the execution of the Riverside Crossing Park dedication, the Grand Leprechaun luncheon, and of course, the, unfortunately, the cancellation of our St. Patrick's Parade, but then putting on a great event very quickly thereafter in Kaufman Park for the community, so thanks to everyone for that, and thanks to everyone for toughing out the, the snowstorm on Friday night, the dedication of the, of the park, I think that's one, one of those things that'll become legend at some point, but it was, it was actually a lot of fun to attend, so thanks to everyone for that, also, thanks for all the preparation, I think, maybe you may comment later on what I think was a really successful council retreat the other day, and then last, just wanna make you aware that the 62 West Bridge Street facility, the old, some of you know it as the, the old schools administration building, next to J. Lou, between J. Lou and Indian Run Elementary, that building is going to come down, starting next week, it was intended to come down and plan that way because they're on spring break, so it'll be least disruptive, so hopefully timing and all that happens, and it, and it comes down next week, just so you're not surprised, and that, of course, is in preparation for the Franklin Street extension project, and, unless you have any other questions, any questions, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, council committee reports, we have, let's see where I'm at, let's see, administrative committee, Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes, thank you, I will echo Dana's comment, thank you all for what I think was a very productive and enjoyable couple-day retreat, I appreciate that, and thank you for all the staff, we had wonderful preparation for that, and so appreciate it, we will be summarizing our annual goals as discussed at the end of retreat, and then we will bring them back to this group for discussion and approval in an upcoming meeting, so thank you all again.
All right, Councilman Reiner? Community development?
Yeah, we continued investigating, tonight, we covered the Heritage Ohio Main Street group, which was a very, really enlightening presentation, and continued on the CIC, and we will have probably one more meeting, and then be able to submit a report, thank you.
Councilmember Aludo, finance committee?
Thank you, so we did have a meeting, we talked, we had Lynn Reidy and some folks come from the Bridge Park New Community Authority, we have them come and present to us once a year, they did a fantastic job, it's a very, very complex financing mechanism, and Lynn always does a wonderful job at really distilling it down and letting us know what they're working on, as well as potential new developments around the authority as well, and then we approved our upcoming meeting schedule, and that's it.
Councilmember Cram for Public Services Committee?
We're actually meeting tomorrow, so just a heads up, we're meeting in the old council chambers, cause there's a meeting in here, so, 5 o'clock tomorrow.
All right, thank you, liaison reports, Dublin Board of Education?
Nothing.
Nothing, 33-quarter, Logan County, anything for Logan County, Councilman Keeler? Oh, Logan County, we don't have, Logan County Campaign Regional Planning Commission?
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you, let's see, where are we at here, Mr. Re, Councilman Reiner, Dublin Arts Council?
Nothing to report.
Or Veterans Committee?
Nothing to report, so.
Okay, Washington Township?
Oh.
Councilmember Grooms, Mid-High Regional Planning Commission?
Yeah, some of you had the opportunity to attend the State of the Region on the 15th, and I felt like it was a really great event, and some valuable information relative to broadband, I did have an opportunity to have supper with Andy Burke the night before, and talk about some of the broadband challenges around the country, and I think he's going to assemble a, a monitorization kind of focus group, and I think MORPC might have the opportunity to participate in that, so we'll look forward to some more information that upcoming, but also wanna mention that we did have our MORPC commission meeting on the 10th, and Director Development, Lydian Halek was the speaker for that, and most of the focus of her time was around brownfields, and I think Megan might be following up with, there's some grant money available specifically for brownfields, and, and we were looking to identify what might exist in the city of Dublin, and what applications we could make to secure some of that funding, so look for some information on that upcoming, thank you.
Thank you, Krista, you have any in zoning commission?
I know, I was out of town for their meeting, so.
Thank you, council roundtable, we'll start with Councilman Cram.
So I sent you on email earlier today, cause I knew we're getting late, but if you can get a chance to look at it, it's in regards to a resident who's been approaching the city with some training ideas, and wanting to get more native plants to increase our pollinators and bees, and whether that's through educational programs with the HOAs, or he's offered to do trainings to anyone who wants to, all the way to possibly looking at our code and seeing how, if it is possible to make some requirements for native plants in our landscaping codes, so that was, I just thought it was, might be a good issue to send to CSAC for, for them to explore, so I was just seeing if you guys supported that, and again, you don't have to decide tonight necessarily, you can
Yes.
redo it next week, but I had attached the presentation, it was a great presentation, if you get a chance to look at it.
Is that something we would like to refer to the CSAC committee to take a look at?
I think it'd be, I think it would be great, I love the idea, I'm huge on native plants, mostly because I'm lazy and I don't have a green thumb, and native plants do a much better job around my house than the ones that I'd have to pay attention to. And native plants do a much better job around my house than the ones that I'd have to pay attention to. But I also think it's a great idea, too. We often have struggles with our bee populations and our other pollinators just because of mosquito spraying and things of that nature. So I think anything we can do to help educate folks and provide some resources for them to be able to plant native plants, I think is fantastic.
So this is something that it's probably going to take a little thought. Should we refer this to CSAC? Or is there any comment from staff about looking, looking at taking this presentation and giving it some consideration and giving us some recommendations on what you'd like to do? Shall we refer this to staff and have them come back with some thoughts?
I think we would support, thank you for sending it out. We would support the referral to CSAC.
All right. Shall we do that? Report it to CSAC?
I'd like to make a motion to refer this to CSAC.
All right, second?
Second.
All right.
Ms. Cram?
Jenny?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox? Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
So I'd like to echo Dana's, Dana's comments, thanking staff for an amazing last Friday. Yeah, it was cold, but those fireworks, only in Dublin, just amazing. So everybody that was responsible, thank you for your hard work.
I just want to say thank you for the retreat. It was really well done, and I think there was a lot of cohesive information given and taken, and a great sense of team. I think we've got a great team here working together for the common good of the city. So thank you for all the prep work. You guys did pull this off. It was, it was really a positive experience. Thank you.
Christina?
Thanks. Echo everything they've said. Staff is amazing. The retreat was really good. I thought it was really good information. I always enjoy the retreat for part of it in looking back at what's been done this past year and how hard staff has worked. So I really, really appreciate everything that staff has done. You know, it's been Robert's first year with us, and to sort of see how far things have come and just in his short time with us, I think is also a real treat. So thanks to all of you as well for all the support that you've given, and Kathy for organizing. Really appreciate it. And I know St. Patrick's Day was a little bit of an odd situation this year, but as we always do and staff always does, they really pulled it off. So kudos to staff.
I would just add, I would echo those comments about all of the festivities around St. Patrick's Day and certainly around the retreat as well. So appreciate everyone's work on that. Wanted to give a couple of updates. I did have the opportunity to go to the National League of Cities Capital City Conference for the Federal Advocacy Committee Meeting for Information Technology and Communications. And the so what of the meeting really was to divide the group kind of into three sections. Those that are trying to achieve equity, those are trying to achieve economic development, and those are, those that are trying to figure out how they're going to invest the federal dollars that they might perhaps have access to. So it was, it was a very robust conversation, you know, for the city of Dublin. It was really, came down to the economic development piece and investing, what the investment like, might look like for federal dollars. Also did have an opportunity to sit down with, at the rail, participate in the Rail Roundtable with Amtrak and talk about what the future of rail might be and where Ohio is placed on that list that the federal government is, is building. And it was a good validation that they were very aware of what the state is looking to do of participating in Amtrak. So it was a great confirmation that the work that is being done at MORPC is being heard at the national level and responded to as well. It was interesting because President Biden, Pelosi, and Buttigieg all came to the conference. So that added a level of complexity that was interesting. Relative to the, the investing of the federal dollars, they took a pretty deep dive on the 60-40 split from entitlement versus competitive grants. You know, we, we saw Dana circulated the memo where the competitive grants, where it looks like Ohio is distributing the competitive grants, is largely in the private sector. The entitlement grants should come down in a different fashion. So I'm still hopeful that we will receive significant dollars in that bucket. Not that we can't continue to compete in the competitive space, but it has appeared that the state of Ohio is looking for those competitive grants that they might go to private entities. That certainly has, will play out. I did reach out and talk to Tracy Richardson, talk to Beth Liston today and Stephanie Coonsy about House Bill 563. That's the short-term rental. Dana had provided testimony to them for that. I just wanted to follow up and let them know verbally that this was something that was very important to our residents and that we, we needed their help down at the State House. So if you have questions about what more of that conversation, I'm happy to, to answer whatever I can. I did meet this morning with Congressman Balderson and Franklin County engineer Cornell Roberts about our 270 bridge. And they, it was still a very positive conversation. They were encouraging. We have a lot of work to do on our end to get across that finish line. But it was still a very good call, or a very good meeting, sit-down meeting with them. And then tomorrow, I do have a conference call with the Lieutenant Governor regarding workforce development. So following that conversation, I'm sure I'll touch base with Dana, and we'll get back to you. We've talked through what some of, what we feel the appropriate next steps might be. We'll do a confirmation with him, or I'll do a confirmation with him on that tomorrow, and then we'll get something back out to you and get something scheduled. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Tomorrow evening in this chamber, we will have a Link Us meeting for residents. So I encourage folks that are interested to come out talking about all the future developments in transportation. So I look forward to attending that as well. So I encourage everybody to come out and share your ideas, so that'll be great. And all I can say is fireworks in the snow, the only place you can do that is in Dublin. So thank you all for a wonderful and memorable set of events. Thank you.
Well, there's been plenty of thank yous, but I think the, it's been proven now that Dublin can pivot when anything comes our way, when it comes to weather or whatever, any activities. It's amazing what our staff is able to do at the spur of the moment when, when we get a little bit of a curve ball. So thank you for that. You made the Hidaka's opportunity to, to show, show them off to the community very well at the luncheon and at the Family Day. This, I want to say that I was so impressed when Kenny McDonald came and talked to us during the retreat and encouraged us to think big. And I think, I thank you, Kathy, for all the work that you did at the retreat. I thank all the, all the members and all the staff for such great conversation at the retreat. I think it just spurred our interest in thinking about what the possibilities here are. And especially, Chris, the work with Amtrak coming, the possibility of that. It's just an exciting time, a little bit like when the 270 came back in the 80s here. Maybe we have some really wonderful opportunities, so I really appreciate that. And I thank council for, for supplying so many interesting initiatives and topics. And Andy, your conversation on the Cultural Arts Center was, was very, very well done, so that's an exciting thing. So other than that, I would say that we will adjourn this meeting this evening, and thank you all for, for coming.